Yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone ready? All right, I'd like to call this January 6th work session to order. Roll call please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Dorr. Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Koller.
Here.
Mrs. Mares.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we trust us for all. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Against nay? The ayes have it. Move on to comments on any topic. Just want to remind people, when you come up, you have three minutes to say who you are and where you're coming from. And it looks like we have, right now, two people. Jean... Dandoes? Sorry, thank you. Can you hold on? I apologize. I'm just gonna get the microphone turned on, and then we'll start you over again.
Okay, thanks. Oh. So, start over. Yeah. Hi, my name is Jean Dandoes. I live in Trap. I'm here tonight to express my support for the Black History Course and the proposed book African American Odyssey. After last month's board meeting, I reviewed the book to better understand some concerns expressed by board members. I found the book to be well organized, thoughtful, and factual. Some of the concerns I heard were about the new civil rights laws. There was concern that this was presented as new laws, I think. But that's not how it's portrayed in the book. It's portrayed as a movement focused on how discrimination and injustice still occur, even if it's not in direct violation of laws. And when it's initially mentioned in the book, it is in quotation marks to show that they're talking about it that way. There was some questions about how Justice Clarence Thomas was presented as opposing affirmative action. When I looked at the book, it does detail his opinion and shows he's opposed to affirmative action, but he has written pretty extensively about it, that he feels it amounts to racial discrimination and is as wrong as segregation or slavery. So I felt the book was accurate and factual there. Generally, there is also some concerns kids might take this course instead of US government, which I think would be fine to substitute this elective for US government. Our kids get a lot of exposure to what I'd call traditional US history and government, and the ability to more deeply explore black history, which is an important and often overlooked part of American history, presents a great opportunity for the kids who express an interest in it. The book is in chronological order and does a deeper dive into historical figures and events, which don't normally get a lot of airtime in a typical history course. Given the great work the administration has done in organizing the class and materials, and the fact you have over 70 kids signed up for it, I think the board should approve it. These kids are signing up for an elective based on an admirable desire to learn more about an area, which is often not a focus. Taking away that opportunity would be a disservice to them and to our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Kathy LaSage?
Good evening. I'm Kathy LaSage. I live in Skippack. My son is one of the more than 70 students who has already requested to take the Black History class for his senior year of Social Studies credit next year. He decided on his own to request this class, and I'm very proud of him for his interest and his initiative. This class will be an elective. No student is required to take it, but I believe it should absolutely be made available to those who would like to learn more in depth about the contributions and challenges of black Americans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. We'll move on to reports and presentations. We have a special presentation on safe schools by Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Good evening to the board and to the public. We're going to quickly go through a review of safety and security in this district. I know we reviewed this already in executive session, but for the public that is here, this is a requirement for us to do with the school board, and we did have some in-depth conversation prior to this in executive session. So, our agenda tonight, as you can see here, is pretty deep into the things that we're doing. We're not going to spend a whole lot of time on any particular topic, but we just wanted to give you an idea of some of the policies and procedures that we're implementing here and some of the practices that we are using. So, again, our purpose is to be legally compliant with what the state of Pennsylvania requires of us and to address the current practices, as well as current events that affect the way we handle safety and security within the district. And this report will then be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education and also the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency through their Safe Schools and Security Committee. So, as your safety and security supervisor, I have a responsibility to oversee the initiatives that are listed here, and I can tell you that we have been very robust in these topics. We work very closely with our emergency responders, but we learn every day that we can always do better. So that's what this report is about, what we can do to improve. Our emergency planning for the last year involved a number of practices that we've engaged with, with Montgomery County, with the township here in Perkyomen, as well as the other townships throughout the district. And you can advance that slide, Dr. Russell. And we also work, because we're in the limit generating station response area, on a radiological and emergency response plan, which I'm sure the community and you are very familiar with. If you've lived in the district for probably more than 10 minutes, you've been involved in a lot of that. So, our legal requirements for this particular presentation are that we go through and address these issues and discuss what we can do to be better. One of the things we do is mandatory training in school safety and security. You can see the topics listed here, from situation awareness through and including trauma and informed approaches. And that's everyone, not only our staff, but also our elected school board of directors, and anyone who works within the district. Our threat assessment team was implemented this year, as was required. We started out the year with a team of about 15, and we ended the year with a team of about 25. So, we have representatives on each level of schools that we have in the district, both primary and secondary, and we're continuing to improve and to advance that so that every building will have at least a minimal team to get started should a threat be something that they face throughout the school year. And as well, we have school security training, not only for our direct staff, but for our contracted staff, and we're working diligently throughout the year to try and expand that. We got a couple of initiatives this past year involving stop the bleed training, CPI training, first aid and CPR training. Some of our current practices... You can advance that too, Dr. Russell. Besides the threat assessment team, is our involvement with the Southeastern Pennsylvania Homeland Security Task Force. They provide us with grant funding and education. There were two specific training classes this last two months, involving not only the Parkland, Florida incident, but also the standard response protocol, which I'll talk about in just a minute, which is the response criteria for the district. Dr. Amy Sax and I attended that to be certified as trained trainers, and will continue to work throughout the district to get our district teams and our individual school teams prepared for that. Our current practices involve interactions with our emergency responders throughout the district, law enforcement, fire, EMS, and emergency management. And our MRUs are currently up to date, have been approved by our solicitor and the respective communities in which they're addressing. Some of the updated practices that we've been working on, that you've heard initiatives throughout the year, include mapping of district buildings, visual identifiers, so that not only our responders, but our school students can understand where they're at and things that are going on. We've initiated a swipe access program to provide more security for our buildings and their access, as well as rekeying our exterior doors. And our Raptor visitor management system should be up and running over the summer, so when visitors do come into our building, we'll be able to vet them appropriately and credential them accordingly when they come into our buildings. Our emergency drills follow the standard response protocol. You've seen a number of these posters throughout the district, throughout our schools and any of the facilities that we use, just as a reminder of what can happen in any particular situation, and it gives some guidance on what you can do in those particular circumstances. And obviously, this is something that is meant to be read prior to an emergency, so I would encourage you, if you're in the buildings, to take the time to stop and take a look at these, whether you're a student or a visitor on campus. Mr. Ganesh was going to talk a little bit this evening about online safety and security and some of the programs that we have for the community and our students.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to highlight some of the safety measures we have in place to protect our... From a technology perspective, to protect our students, staff, and our systems. Starting off with our student Chromebooks, we have over 5,200 student Chromebooks, one-to-one devices. All of our Chromebooks are protected by our filtered by a cloud-based filtering solution called Securely. When these Chromebooks are in the buildings, they have an added layer of protection through our firewall, and when these Chromebooks go home, Securely continues to filter these devices. We also use Securely to receive real-time notifications when a student's Chromebook activity detects signs of nudity, bullying, self-harm, suicide, and violence. Moving on to the emails. Our K-2 students do not have access to email capabilities. Students in grades 3 to 8 have email capabilities to send and receive emails only to PBS's email addresses. Our high school students do have the ability to send and receive emails to outside email addresses, but our email system is configured to automatically block malicious emails and also to put out an alert when it detects a suspicious email. Cybersecurity awareness. Again, we are aware of the increased cyber threats that our schools face these days, and we have put in place several measures in place to protect our students and staff and also our systems against these cyber attacks. Again, this is a continuous process we have in place to increase awareness to our staff about the various cyber threats that we face these days. 911 buttons. All our buildings at this point are equipped with the alert beacons that can be used in school or in building, emergency notification devices, and these things can be triggered in case of an emergency. Security cameras. Our schools are monitored 24/7. We have over 250-plus security cameras that monitor our schools. Our retention policies, we keep these video footages for... Our retention policies will keep this video footage for over two weeks. We have increased our storage capabilities that at this point, we keep the video footage for over two months at this point. So, those are the items that I have from a technology perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Ganesh. The next topic is our Safe to Say data. You're familiar with our reporting system, anonymous reporting system throughout the state of Pennsylvania. Our contact team would involve a principal or an assistant principal that is building-specific, and then a team of administrators throughout the building to follow up. So, any one of us on that list will get a notification each time a Safe to Say tip were to come to us. This is given to our students, grade 5 through 12, and each year they receive a refresher course on how that is administered and how they can use it. So, our tip volume for the last two years, this is the current year here, we've had 245 instances. You'll notice the chart says 242, but three of those were overlapping between two buildings. Our highest incidents are obviously those of bullying and/or harassment. We do our best to control that, and many of these incidents that you see listed here are handled on the building level. If required, our threat assessment team could take action on some of these tips, although we've not had that as an issue this past year. And as well, our student assistance program, some of the other policies and procedures we have in the district, address these specifically. This compared to last year's numbers is quite high, but we need to remember that we are back in session, so the students are interacting daily with each other, as opposed to the last few years where that was limited interaction. So, they're typically an evenly distributed number of contacts, although this year it was skewed a bit between our middle schools and the high school. I don't have any real definition for why that is, but I can assure you that each one of those individually was addressed appropriately. And then, Dr. Russell had to comment a little bit about our PACE survey.
Thank you. So, every other year, the district administers the PACE survey, the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, and inquires of... and inquires of students in grades six, eight, 10, and 12, their experiences around drugs and alcohol, school antisocial behaviors, bullying, hazing, negative behaviors or discriminating behaviors in school, and gets a sense of what's happening from the perspective of our students. The reports can be accessed, they become public, and the state just released them in May, and the link here in the slides will take you to some of the detailed reports for Perkyomen Valley and really for any school that you might be interested in learning more about. There are also some county reports that represent some comparison data about students, and this is of particular interest this year, coming off of the circumstances of the pandemic and some of what our students have experienced. There are a few things that we would just like to call your attention to when it comes to risk factors or protective factors, as PACE identifies them. So, risk factors are those factors we are learning about our students through this particular survey that raise questions or concern. So, attitudes favorable towards antisocial behaviors on the part of parents. So, students are picking this up, and they're communicating this in their survey responses. So, that's something for us to keep an eye on, and we're doing some work around the education for our students of drugs and alcohol. We recently attempted to provide informational sessions to community members on some drug and alcohol information, as well as mental health information, in our Path to Health and Wellness Symposium. We will continue to work to do that. And another risk factor that's been identified is a low commitment towards school. So, we're learning from some of our students that filled out the survey, they don't feel as committed to school as we would like, and we wonder, again, is that coming off of the circumstances of the pandemic? So, we're watching that very carefully. On a positive note, there are some nice protective factors, and one includes the family attachment, how our families are committed to school, our parents are very engaged. This is showing through in the survey results. That's a very strong positive for us as a district. And then also, the opportunities for pro-social involvement. That translates to activities for our students, whether it's athletics, music, the arts, but those activities, even some of those things that happened over the weekend with the PV Art and Food Truck Festival or the eighth grade celebrations, these are activities that are pro-social and keep our students connected and engaged in school. So, some positive feedback around those. We dive a lot deeper as a team of counselors, social workers, and even our special education department, to really try and unpack these data and understand what the needs of our students are and what we can do as a school district to support meeting those needs. So, you'll see some of those recommendations and some of those pieces of those conversations emerge as time goes on. It has become an ongoing conversation. Thank you. I will also mention that in recent years, we have been sharing the student dropout rate and how many students drop out each year. So, this is data for the past five years, including this year. And in addition to that number of students, every student matters, and the percentage that represents of students graduating from the high school, we have some supportive measures that we implement. So, our counselors work diligently, our social workers work diligently to support our students and get them to the stage and in receipt of a diploma. That's our goal for every student. So, there are things that our counselors and social workers do to try and support students who come upon very challenging circumstances that pull them away from school. So, these are some of the things that we do. And some of the supports that we have available to us that involve early access to employment through Montco Works or early access to college through the Montgomery County Community College and a program called Gateway, which really is a blend of high school experience and college experience with heavy supports in place, lots of advising for these students. And again, the purpose is to, the goal is to engage them in school and support them in getting that diploma in graduating so that they set themselves up to be future-ready and sustainable employment eventually. We have job corps, and we have the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, which also supports some of our students having access to employment. So, these are some of the preventative supports that we tap into when our students are really struggling to come to school on a regular basis and be committed.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Some of the additional resources that we have available to us are through the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. I'm a part of a job a lot group that discusses topics with all the other districts in the county, as well as private schools throughout the county about national and local best practices when it comes to response. We also use manual and behavioral health practices, student assistance program and threat assessment. All these additional resources are available to us as we work through some of these situations that we see that can be challenging to our school. On the bottom there, you'll see a link to the Secret Service Averted School Violence Report from 2021. It's a public survey, or a public study, rather, that was done to understand the depth of some of these circumstances that we see, such as Uvalde, Texas, or Michigan, and places like them, and what we can do as a community to prevent them. And by showing you some of the examples of things that have happened in other communities that are much like ours, we can understand better how we can make our schools safer. The onsite personnel that we have have the best chance to respond because these incidents usually evolve and are over in less than five minutes. So, it's important for us to understand what we can do individually and collectively to make that happen, to prevent the violence that we could otherwise not want to have on our school property. So, the things we're doing next, there's many projects that are ongoing. We've talked about them at length throughout our safety and operations meetings throughout the year and here with each of you at some of our work sessions and board meetings. So, these that are listed here are either in process or going to be coming to a close very soon and implemented, but part of this report requires us to recommend to you some things that we think should be done to potentially improve our standing in security and safety. That recommendation this year could not be stronger than to consider having our own security staff here at Perkyomen Valley. We currently have a contracted security staff, but do we want to move to our own security staff? Do we want to have SROs, school resource officers? Do we want to have school police officers? What do we want it to look like? This is just a sample of what that will look like financially to only cover the school day. This is for 16 personnel throughout our seven buildings. It comes with accountability. It comes with consistent coverage at all of our schools. It comes with the building of relationships. Quite frankly, we don't get that with people that our students only see every third or fourth day, or maybe only for a week at a time. But if we had our own employees, just much like their teachers, that they see day in and day out, we can build those relationships and hopefully build bridges with them and get information and help them where they're concerned most about their safety and their security here at school. So, there are a number of opportunities for us to improve the safety profile of our schools, and this is just one of them we'd like to suggest to you. The last one, Dr. Russell wanted to comment briefly on some mental health recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And so, we'll conclude with just coming off of some of the data that I was just referencing and some of what we've learned about our students having experienced the past two years. We have been enhancing the mental health resources we have available to them, and we will be initiating those e-therapy sessions that we had surveyed parents about a few months ago this summer. We'd like to start that with at least a pilot group and see how those e-therapy or teletherapy sessions serve our students in the fall. We would like to add to what we offer in terms of teletherapy, as well as the onsite outpatient services. We currently offer onsite outpatient services in each of our schools. However, we don't have the resources provided by the vendors to meet the needs of the students in any of our buildings, so we'd like to enhance and reinforce that resource, if we could, with an organization called the Light Program. And our counseling department, our social workers, our wellness committee did a lot of work in considering what might support our students most effectively, and we've landed on these sorts of resources with some of our ESAR funds. So, stay tuned for additional information, but hoping to continue to see a level of normalcy return to the school setting for our students and students to feel as if they can get back to where they once were, if they're not there right now. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board before we conclude?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, mister.
Student lead ads on report, Mr. Seibel and Mr. Schaefer.
All right. So, there's not that much to say this evening. The year's kind of coming to a close. We've been taking some finals for different classes. The rest of our finals will be at the end of the year. Some of the APs had them earlier, but other than that, all of our sports are done. It's kind of a sad time in the year. It's just kind of fizzling out, but it'll be exciting to get back into the summer and relax for a little bit and then come back in the fall ready to learn again. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Matt?
I would say our students worked really hard this year. I'll highlight our sports. We had a phenomenal spring sports year. I mean, our boys made a run at the districts in baseball. We had a new school record, pack record, shot put throw by Ronde Washington in track as well. We had two girls go to, no, I'm sorry, we had six girls go to states and a myriad of other people. Lacrosse had a great season. Softball, we just had a great, great spring sports season. Dr. Russell mentioned earlier the art festival that was this weekend. I unfortunately couldn't go, but I saw pictures, and I kind of wish I could turn back time ago.
It was a great turnout. Yeah, I was there.
I saw there was a dunk tank, and in hindsight, that would have been really fun. But it looked really great, and I'm sure that if anybody was there, they would definitely attest to how much fun that looked. Yeah, like Christian said, it's a sad time in the year because people are leaving, seniors are graduating, but we're excited for them and everything that they're going to go do. So, that's all we got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I actually do have a president's report. First, I just want to thank Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Seibel for your dedication to the student body this year. It's a testament that two young individuals like yourself would take time away from your friends and family and school to spend dedicated time and services at schoolwork sessions and school board meetings. It's an extremely difficult task to represent an entire school body. The both of you did it with grace and poise, and you should be commended for that. I hope you have enjoyable summers and continue to take the governance that you learned this past year in this role to future endeavors in your life, and this is a leaping point to future success. So, on behalf of the rest of the board, thank you very much for your dedicated time and service, and maybe some of you will be back next year. I also want to thank Dr. Russell and the entire administration staff and the staff at Evergreen for the role that they played today in the press conference for tax and charter reform that happened today at Evergreen at 1:00. We were joined by State Representative Joe Cerisi, Tracy Penneck, Matthew Bradford, Joe Webster, Napoleon Nelson, as well as other superintendents throughout the Montgomery County area. It was a great, beautiful sunny day, but most importantly, Perkyomen Valley got to showcase an important discussion and topic, which is fair funding for our students, and it happened to happen at our school district, which is the best in the area. So, it was great to see. So, I really appreciate the time and effort, especially on short notice that the administration was able to put forth for that. Lastly, I just wanted to address the briefing that the board received from the superintendent on June 2nd about the potential committee structure change and solicit feedback from the board for any potential change to the committees for next year. Currently, our committee structure is policy, finance, education, wellness, safety operations, communication advisory, and assessment, and the suggested talking points or changes next year would be to move finance, safety, and operations as a committee as a whole. One of the things that I wanted to ensure, if we did this, obviously it gets everyone involved on the board because either crucial committees that everyone on the board should play a role on, is to also ensure that the community has an opportunity and a role to have a free-flowing communication like we currently have in safety and operations and finance. So, one of the things that would be suggested would be to adjust the agenda so that finance and safety operations committee section that happens on a whole happens up front. That way, members from our community don't need to guess when that's going to happen. It would happen up front. And then, obviously, policy and education would be kind of pushed on top of each other, where policy and education would meet on the third Tuesday. Policy would be from 6:30 to 7:30, and education wellness would be from 7:30 to 9:00. The idea was to have a little bit more efficiency with our committee structure and also attempt to not have administrators who might not necessarily live in our school district staying late multiple times throughout the month. So, I wanted to see if any board members had any feedback for that. Yeah, Dr. Kohler.
So, I am in agreement with moving the finance to the committee as a whole, but I was wondering if we're doing that with finance, if we should consider doing that with education as well? Having been on that committee for several years, a lot of that is presented to the board anyway through Mrs. Smith's education updates. Looking through tonight's presentation, it's very similar to what we went through in the education committee last week. So, there's a lot of redundancy there, and I think it's a topic that does, like you said, with some of these other things, apply to the whole board needing to be educated on these things. So, seems like that might be another one to consider shifting to that format.
Yeah. I won't speak for Dr. Russell, Dr. Russell, please, but I know one of the things that we've seen especially this year, and I don't know if it's like that in the past, but education has a lot of people coming from the community, whether it's on Zoom or in person. And so, we want to, you know, that's a thought process to think about is you want to make sure that those committee members that come out to these meetings, I mean, I think the last education meeting had 30 people on Zoom by itself, but that is a good talking point. Dr. Russell or Mrs. Smith, do you have anything you want to add on that?
I will defer to Mrs. Smith. I really appreciate the idea, actually, because I do think it makes sense. We've been trying to avoid redundancy for the board and be efficient with time, yet comprehensive with the information. We could consider the order or when these committees might be presented as committees of the whole. I know that some school districts operate their work session really as a series of committees and conversations. We might also consider maintaining Zoom for that purpose, for that reason. So, some different ways that we can continue to engage the public in these discussions. But Mrs. Smith, I would ask that you weigh in as well, because we hadn't thought about this in advance. So, I appreciate the idea.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. I would agree with Dr. Kohler. I do feel that there are many times where I am repeating or at least taking the education committee and trying to condense it to at least provide the board and the public that maybe we're not at the education committee, an opportunity to hear some of the information, but try not to completely repeat things. So, I certainly would be open to that idea. I do agree as well with Mr. Saylor. We tend to get quite a bit of community involvement, or at least some of our teachers come out as well to education committee. So, I just want to ensure that we'd still have that opportunity for them.
Here's what.
So, given the time that normally we spend at education committee or listening into education committee, I feel like because that is such a heavy-lifting meeting, I think there are pros and cons to bringing it into work session. I think the redundancy is probably the biggest pro, but I do think that we do need to allow for that amount of time. I know that a lot of times, you know, Mrs. Smith, you have an interactive portion and a feedback portion, and I do think that that's very valuable to the community. But bringing it into the work session as a whole, I think not only affords everybody a voice together on the topics of the meeting, it would also allow for perhaps more public to be involved during the work session, and I think that that would also be very helpful overall. That being said, keeping policy in line with education, because policy is a board committee like finance, I think it would be helpful to have policy be part of the work session rather than a standalone at another point. I think that a lot of the conversations that happen during policy need to happen in a more public setting. I think that the fact that public board meetings are recorded and then can be referenced after the fact is very valuable. I think that the public should be able to see the conversations that happen during committee meetings in a very transparent way. So, by having these conversations in just an out-and-out forum with everybody's involvement, I think would be more benefit than not, regardless of how long the meeting happens to last. Perhaps other things can get shifted to another meeting, or, you know, if there's a very committee business-heavy meeting on the one week, then the following week could maybe be presentations, superintendents' reports, things like that. I just think that the documentation of committees for the public review is essential to uniting our community.
Dr. Campbell.
I definitely agree with all of that. I think the redundancy piece is a big piece of it, but I also agree that we need to have some of those interactive moments. So, maybe just a way to streamline that the larger conversations of things that are, you know, coming to a close, we're starting, getting ready to vote on something, happens at the, you know, the work session, and being more strategic and mindful of the session times that we have to work in the individual committees so that it's more project-focused. so that it's more project focused for the interactive pieces versus the discussions over larger topics. So I think maybe just some forethought and more planning as we go into the month so that we still have those moments to work and be able to be interactive and, and work together to kind of come up with ideas. But when we're discussing things or getting closer to voting, like policy is a big one, that means I do agree with Ms. White that it needs to be out in the open for everyone to hear. The last policy meeting, I got all kinds of feedback of all kinds of things that happened and I had no way to go back and fact check to look up what comments were made because it's not something that is recorded. And I felt, I feel now at this point that I'm kind of, you know, behind the scenes trying to figure out what's going on because I wasn't at that particular meeting. So I think we, we need to be a little bit more strategic as well.
Ms. Sevendrockett.
So I have to say, when I got the memo with this information, I was surprised to see the request. It was just a couple of years ago that the request came to move finance from the board of the whole to an individual meeting so that we could dive more into it. And it was just within the past couple of years that we streamlined our committees into what they are now. We used to have far more committees than we do now. So I, I have to say, I was really kind of taken aback by it at, at first. But then as I, you know, delved more into the pros and cons of committees that I have passed around at various times from PSBA, I think committees only work well when there's trust among board members and we're not there right now. So I, I support the idea of doing all committees as a whole and I know other districts do that. I know Sauter Town holds their first monthly meeting as a committee of the whole. And as you said, Dr. Russell, lots of certain amount of time to each thing. And I, I really feel like that's the direction that this board needs to go in because I think we all need all of the information in order to feel like we know what we're voting on every month.
All right, so if I, one, one, one talking point would be move all the committees to a committee of the whole, correct? And then another talking point, Ms. White, if I got you correctly, would do policy, finance and safety ops as the whole. Oh, I, well, yes, I apologize. So we, we had safety ops in there with, with finance. You would, you would just?
So I mean, I don't know. I know you're presenting this as part of a president's report, but it would be helpful to have a visual. I think it's probably really out of context to the public to not really understand like committee structures in general. So a visual would be nice to see how everything's broken down. But regardless, I, I think that my point in general with regards to the specifics of me having the thought of policy and education, those two are, they're diametrically, they're not the same. They're just two different things. Policy goes with the finance. So I, I don't understand why that was a pairing, other than the fact that policy, there were policy meetings that lasted 15 minutes this year. So it's a short amount of time. So it's a good thing to pair with education because we're already all there.
I, I appreciate the point. The only other thing I'll add is that we were trying not to tax board members who might be on both committees. And so it's often a different group of, of representatives, but.
Right. So to me, I mean, and this was a conversation that I had when I first came on was really understanding the role of being assigned to a committee and only having a board voice at committees that you're assigned to. I have been, you know, of the mindset from the beginning and, you know, obviously, you know, Dr. Russell, that I generally try to at least listen into every committee because I want to have an understanding of what conversations happening during the committee. Again, that's not always possible. So I have been from the very beginning a proponent of committees of the whole. But I, I realize that time is of the essence. I also think that in general, from, I, I would assume, not speaking for any of you, that from an administrative standpoint, it would be appreciated if we could just get it over and done with and not have to come, you know, three or four times a month to, you know, it's nine o'clock at night and Jim's still talking about safety and operations. But we do, those, I think safety and operations and education are two very big, they're heavy lifting, right? There's a lot of content in those meetings. So I, I don't know how better to have the public conversation that we need to have for those two subjects in a setting. I don't know how that plays into allowing the public a voice since at board meetings, they're only allowed three minutes at the beginning and end of every meeting. So I, I do have some, some questions with regards to public engagement in committees and having them lose their voice. However, I think that the benefit of transparency for the public to actually see what is discussed at meetings for the committees outweighs engagement.
Would, would you, would you, would you be okay with everything as a committee as a whole except education? Because that just garners so much more people coming to the meeting. And so for instance, we would do committee of the whole for, you know, all the other committees and allow free flow for community members to, to have time to, to communicate with board members and talk, but then leaving education separate because it's again, like there's 30 people at the last education meeting and there normally are a lot of people at those meetings.
Again, I'm, I'm a proponent of committees of a whole for all committee meetings. And I would appreciate if those 30 people would start to come to board meetings so they can actually see interaction and the way that the school district is run.
Mr. Fallon, just real quick, would you be okay with committee as a whole for everything?
There's a side of me that says that I would, I would not necessarily be opposed to it, but it also seems like my concern is that is if you take them and have a committee as a whole as opposed to individual committees, then you're going to lose a lot of the depth of some of the conversations and information that would go into the committee meetings themselves.
Dr. Kohler.
So I just wanted to go back to the idea of the committee of the whole and losing that community participation. Because I thought about that and some of the things that Dr. Campley brought up in terms of the interactive piece in the education committee. So I was trying to think like, what's a workaround of that? And I, for one thing, I thought, so at the last education committee meeting, there definitely were not 30 people. There have been some meetings where there have, but there's also been some where there's been six, you know, so it depends on the topic a lot of time. And I wonder if reducing the number of meetings would increase attendance at some of the bigger meetings? That if, you know, parents can't necessarily come to four meetings a month, but maybe they could make it to the one and they get to hear a little bit of everything. So that's one way to look at it. And the other thing I thought about is, Dr. Russell, I can't remember how often we had your roundtables this year, but when I, before I was on the board, I went to quite a few of the superintendent roundtables, even before you were superintendent. And that was a really good way to get community engagement and feedback and not necessarily feel like you have to be part of a committee and go regularly. So maybe we need to go back to some of that and that's where the interactive piece happens. Maybe Mrs. Smith could have assistant superintendent roundtables. Like, I don't know. I think there's other ways to get some of this engagement, but still get the work done, you know, once a month and then people know, okay, this is a meeting I'm going to try to get to rather than, well, I can only go to one meeting this month. Which one am I going to go to?
Yeah.
You know, I was just communicating with Mrs. Smith. I wonder if too, as we're brainstorming ways to get some of these conversations to continue, maybe we hold two to four education committee meetings, one a quarter, let's say, over the course of the year in the more traditional format. But, but really eliminate some of that true redundancy that occurs. And really, it's administration that's doing a lot of that legwork. We like, we like to offer opportunities for our public to weigh in. But there may be ways that we could structure or either shift the forum for the conversations back to more superintendent roundtables or assistant superintendent roundtables, or maybe we hold two to four of those traditional style committee meetings a year.
Yeah.
And couldn't it even be when there's something that you, that, you know, a special topic? You know, just having a meeting, okay, education committee meeting, we're going to do a special topic next month on X. And that's when we bring out and have the interactive. I just think the overarching umbrella needs to be here in the committee as a, you know, as a whole. And the special topics and the things that we want to have that we're investigating or we're exploring and we're, we want to gather more information and input can be.
So we could do that third Tuesday, potentially going to have a special topic on a committee if, if it's needed.
And it could be any, right.
Yeah, any committee.
Maybe we don't designate it as every Tuesday is, or every Tuesday, I don't know, or once a month it's education. For this particular month, it's not education, it's safety because we want to discuss more in detail about what the job description might be if we decide to, to do what the recommendation was tonight. And that can have that interactive because it's something that isn't yet, it needs to be flushed out and we need input.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I, I support, I mean, I like the idea of having kind of a hybrid approach, doing both. To me, it sounds like it could serve us well.
Anybody else have anything? Dr. Russell, you think we could have like a, a little map draw up for next, a visual for next meeting?
Absolutely, yes. We'll put that together. And, and I also want to speak to some of the, the points that Ms. White made around how will we capture that information that's often a part of the public conversation? If we eliminate that safety and operations as a standalone, how does that information get organized and then communicated? And we will speak to that as well.
And there's, there's nothing preventing us in a work session if we did a committee of a whole of like allocating, we're going to open up, we got 20 minutes of open conversation for finance of people from the community. We're not pigeonholed into you only have three minutes.
No, it's, it's at your discretion.
Yeah, so we could, we could build a free flowing movement so, because we want members of the community to, to feel very comfortable in coming out. We could build that time allotment in. Not great. Superintendent's report, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. So this evening I have, just so you know what you're up against, a little bit more of an extensive report. As we're winding down the year, I wanted to be able to touch upon a couple of major areas of focus over the course of the school year. And to Dr. Campley's point about some questions that emerged out of policy committee recently, I want to clarify, I want to address those questions and talk about what I'm proposing to be the next steps here. So this is the agenda. Let's start with our current comprehensive plan. You're going to hear more about the midpoint review and some proposed updates from Mrs. Smith very soon. And you will be asked to approve those updates in August this summer. Currently, our shared values, and I look at these as some of our overarching goals, are really around and focused upon preparing our students to be future ready, nurturing our schools to be safe and supportive and building upon those community partnerships that we value. So let's start with some celebrations. It's hard to believe that we are here June 6th. It, it just, the year suddenly seemed to go very quickly. Graduation is Friday night. All are invited. We're hoping for weather like we've had the, the past several days and hoping that lots of you decide to march along with staff. It will be held in the stadium at seven in the event of inclement weather. It will be moved into the competition gym with some limited people, but streamed in other areas of the building. Always an exciting event for our students and our families. So looking forward to that this Friday evening. And we had that eighth grade celebration I talked about. This was a pretty neat picture that East took with the high school in the background. I thought that was very, very clever. But our students came out and there was this fantastic cornhole tournament. I will announce Dr. Kohler's son actually won the tournament. That was pretty cool. Because what I heard was some of the kids playing cornhole said, you know, it was going so well, we were just stuck playing cornhole all night. And he ended up being the champ. So that was pretty neat. But there was dancing, there was food and, and just lots of fun for the kids. And principals have shared with me, they wonder why we didn't do it outside years past. So that's a silver lining that's emerged from the pandemic and some of the choices that we made. So that was a really fun event for our kids. I happened to be up at West as they were getting started and getting ready to go and they too were very excited. And both home and schools just continue to do so much for our students in making these events really fun events. So my thanks go out to them as well and the kids. Hopefully the students have wound down their eighth grade year and they're excited for what comes next. I also wanted to give a shout out to the PV Student Loan Association. I have a relationship with Mrs. Hope Fioravanti. She's the treasurer. And she sent me a little message with some of the data that she was reporting on this year. They awarded over $100,000 to our students and these are no interest loans for our students. And she mentions there the returning applications, new applications, and then a few scholarships. So again, our students are really fortunate to have access to some of this funding to help offset the costs to their college education at the forefront anyway. So thanks to them for their work as well. So let's shift to special education. Policy 113 encourages the superintendent to provide some periodic updates to the board with criteria and the results of my evaluation of the work of our special ed department. And we really keep you or attempt to keep you up to breast, up to date, excuse me, abreast of what's happening over the course of the year. And Dr. Boyd has been presenting each March, the special ed report where she shares some of the data, the really salient data and some of the things that we're doing on a larger scale to improve the experiences of our special education students and assist them in being future ready. I was at a unified sports track meetup at Daniel Boone. This is a picture of the teams that were there that day. It was Pots Grove, Perkyomen Valley and Daniel Boone. And that continues to be a really fun event for our students in terms of the criteria. And what I'd like to very briefly focus upon, it's around the identification, the percentage of special education students in our district versus regular ed. And we also compare that to the state, the state data from across the Commonwealth achievement. How are our special education students achieving relative to our regular education students? How well are we getting them included in the regular ed setting? This connects to our conversations around equity and affording all students equitable opportunities for the most rigorous, challenging curricula they are ready to receive. And how are we doing in preparing our special ed students to be future ready? So this data comes from, in some cases, the data presentation that was made in June. But this shares with you some of the information about Perkyomen Valley. We are the LEA, the Local Education Agency and versus the state. So we are at 15.5% based on the most recent data, the state on average, 18.1% of student populations in public school settings are identified as special education. And this would be a breakdown based on race. And that's important for us to look at. And you may wonder why. Why are you calling out race? Because if the percentage of, for example, black students in our school district is 4.5, but 8.1% of the total identified population within our special ed is black, there is a bit of a discrepancy there. Whether it's significant or not, we would have to conduct a significant or a statistical analysis. However, it prompts questions for us and we ask questions about how we're identifying students. What's prompting an identification or an evaluation? What are the steps that lead to suggesting a multidisciplinary evaluation of our students? So that's why some of these data would be called out for our subgroups. Pretty carefully. Sure, yeah, sure.
So I know that we had talked about the qualification of term special ed with percentages at, in certain education meetings. I'm curious if, what constitutes this statistic? Is it anyone with an IEP or a GIEP or is it just specifically students that are identified as learning support or?
It would be IEP overall.
Okay, so I guess my, the reason I ask that question is with regard to the comparison of percentages of population versus identified issues. I'm, I'm wondering what the, the breakdown is for, for students identified as with a GIEP, for example. And I remember from education committee previously that the, and we had had pretty extensive conversation, I think even in our equity and inclusion meetings about the, the lack of minority identified GIEPs. So I just am curious as to how that would line up since they do generally, where they should have a differentiated learning system.
Yeah, it's an excellent point. We have called that out in our data presentations in the past. I'd have to go back to see if we actually did that in January. We often see the trend across the Commonwealth is a high percentage of Asian students that are identified as gifted versus a lower percentage of some other races that we see here. And the opposite when it comes to special education, the point that you're making, we've actually called those data out and presented them as part of the data presentation in the past. And we think really carefully about some of those. And we think really carefully about some of those differences that we see. You know, these are on the slide because they prompt questions for us about our processes and about how we're serving all students. So we can look that up, and I can share that updated data.
And I guess, just to add to that, I just would be curious to know if it has to do with parent advocacy, or if it has to do with, you know, just the, the way that staff analyzes and identifies certain individuals, kind of in an unconscious sort of way. I just think that maybe there's a different level of engagement in, in different, different groups, just like in, from a cultural standpoint.
We would certainly want to look into that more deeply to consider any of those explanations for why there might be the differences that we see. Moving on, when we look at achievement, we see that for students with IEPs versus students without, you can see here, this is participation rate for students with IEPs. This is proficiency rate for children with IEPs against their grade level academic standards. So these are things that we want to improve upon. So while we might be achieving higher than the average across the state, we've talked about this before, these percentages are not where we want them to be for our special education students. And we continue to work on that with some of the resources that we've requested of you, and the models that we've put in place throughout the district, particularly co-teaching, some of the instructional practices that we're promoting, UDL, for example. We also see here, this is information that's available to you on a public website. I have the link there on the slides that you can access. But there's a gap in proficiency rates for children with IEPs and all students when it comes to those grade level standards. Now, Perkyomen Valley, you can see here for the LEA, we've done a little bit better in some cases, and not so good in others. Where you see we did not meet the target is where we have not done as well as we would like. So we need to focus on that and consider, within our MTSS systems and the interventions we offer, what we need to do differently to get these students caught up. So there isn't that gap in proficiency. The lower chart indicates to you the percentage of time special education students are spending in the regular ed setting. And we've met the target in each of those cases. So for our special education students inside regular classes, 80% or more of the time. You can see our percentage, the percentage of our students that participate in that way, versus the average across the state, we've met the target. So that's the interpretation of each of those bars on the graph, on the lower side of this slide. So again, monitoring special education achievement, participation in the regular ed setting, equity of opportunity to be exposed to some of that more rigorous learning, the challenging learning, is important. Now here's where I want to make a point with you. While we were not evaluated or monitored with respect to our transition goals and the transition services we've, we provide, across the state, we're not doing very well. In districts across the state, you can see that 80.5% did not meet the goals. They didn't meet the target for post-secondary transition goals for our students. We don't know exactly where we would fall, but that certainly raises questions. And we've been talking to our, our tech school, as well as considering what we can do in the high school to actually enhance some of the transition opportunities that exist. So right now in the high school, there are some opportunities that really prepare our special education students for real-world, sustainable employment. We have a coffee cart, a perk-up cafe it's called, where staff can actually place an order for a coffee or a drink. It won't be maybe as nice as the one that Dr. Campley has tonight, but they, they do some really creative coffees. Maybe we have to add some of those, those fruit drinks. But they do a great job taking the orders, preparing the drinks, figuring out the budget, ordering the supplies. They are also just getting into making pins. And they produce these pins for individuals that can be purchased, and they deliver the mail here in the high school. We'd like to expand that. And next year, we're thinking about where else can we offer our students opportunities to prepare themselves for jobs beyond high school. And some of the areas there that we're thinking about are listed. It's actually a continuum. When we think about expanding the transition services we offer, we want to prepare our students as we move them through their years in high school, and afford them greater opportunities and greater independence in doing that. And we've learned from some neighboring districts, I happen to be at a study council at Upper Perkyomen, they have this wonderful transition program, they have these strong connections through their, their chamber, they're not the PV Chamber, but their chamber, where they take students in, they work together collaboratively. It's a really pretty neat event. So we're, we're learning from some districts around us about how we can strengthen the opportunities we offer to our students. It's a major goal. We're doing the same thing at North Monco Technical Career Center. So how do we make sure that the career exploration opportunities, which is a program that allows our special education students to explore and participate in different labs, how do we make sure that's setting our students up for success? Whether they actually achieve the NOCTI certification, or maybe it's a tiered programming outcome where maybe they don't quite advance that far, but they get to a point where they're set up to be future-ready for the job market in some way. We also learned recently of an inclusive cafe that a community organization wants to start in skipback right now. And this individual has shared information with the school district and trying to support in any way that I can. But the idea is that we would really engage neurodiverse students and engage them in ways that gives them a social setting, as well as opportunities potentially for employment. So that's an exciting step within our community. I'll transition to school wellness and focus on really two aspects of the wellness policy in terms of follow-up, assessment of our school environment, and then suggestions for improvement. I'd like to mention the Health and Safety Transition Plan. As we evaluate our environment and the circumstances of the pandemic, my recommendation to the board, and we need to review our plan every six months, my recommendation to the board, as I reviewed its setup, is that we continue, at this point in time, with this plan moving forward into next year. Ironically, we did get a message from Montgomery County Office of Public Health today about a meeting Thursday. So I don't know if there's updated information that we'll learn, but right now, I would recommend to the board that we maintain this plan, version four, into next year, unless there are questions or conversation about that. We can always talk about that next week as well. And then suggestions for improvement, I continue to come back to those mental health and wellness resources. And we've mentioned those as part of the safety report. We want to make sure that we're offering resources in the ways that we are able as a school district to support our students with these needs. We've also reposted our supervisor of health and wellness. We're getting some applications in there. At this point in the year, it's a good time to do that. We've had trouble filling that position and looking to do that for next year, once again. So let's move on to educational equity. We have an equity policy, policy 832. And as Dr. Campley mentioned, this was a, a policy of discussion at the most recent policy committee meeting. And I've started out with PSBA's response to the question, what is equity? And when I talk about equity, I describe it as really affording all students with opportunities, with access to resources that meet their needs, and provide them with the most challenging and rigorous learning opportunities that will set them up for what's to come after graduation. So it's a just and fair distribution of resources based upon student needs. We have had lots of conversations about equity over the years. And in January of 21, this was the equity update that included these four areas of growth we as a district were focused on. Lots of policy conversation. What can we do to make sure, to the greatest degree possible, we're affording equity, that students are not discriminated against, that we're upholding policies in ways that supports that initiative? What are we doing in our curricula and with instruction, as well as our resources, to make sure that students are represented, our, our curricula are up to date and accurate, and representative of all that comprise our community? We are attempting to diversify our staff and just make sure that when we have access to applicants that don't all look the same, they are considered. And we bring them in so that our students all have role models that they can look to. As our school community continues to become more diverse, we want to make sure that students see individuals like them in role model positions. That's a goal. And we, we work on community partnerships. I'm on the PV Chamber Board, I'm also on the Foundation Board, and also work with the Rotary a little bit, so, or Sinus College. So lots of opportunities to continue to build partnerships with individuals in our community, and afford opportunities to our students through those partnerships. Hitting the wrong button. So when we look at the policy, if I zero in on this particular section of the policy, this is pulled right from policy 832, "I will annually provide an educational equity update to the board that reflects some of the efforts that have been undertaken, made to achieve the goals of this policy." That's a part of the point I want to make this evening. I also want to follow up on some of the questions that were raised during policy committee last month. We give you enrollment data each month. We provide you with achievement indicators, and that extensive data presentation in January really touches upon the learning and the growth on the part of our students, some of the things that we're doing, some of the things that we request of you based on how our students are progressing. There are other variables that could be considered under behavior, for example, discipline. Is there an imbalance there? Or does that appear to be equitable, if you will, in terms of the consequences that are assigned to different students? And then opportunity indicators, back to Ms. White's question about enrollment in particular courses. So I've zeroed in on some of the AP courses. We do have some discipline data for you here that indicates, based on the series of infractions we are obligated to report to the state, broken down by race, and certainly, again, prompted to ask some questions. If, if there is a percentage of a particular race within our population, that should be pretty close to the percentage of, in this case, the infractions and the consequences assigned to those students. We want to see an alignment there. That's what we look for when we think about equity in this way. So you'll see some of those data. These are data that indicate, you know, I'm always wondering about preparing our students to be future-ready based on the jobs that we know currently exist. And a lot of those jobs are in the STEM areas. And we are looking at males versus females in this particular dataset enrolled in AP courses. And it turns out for this year, we have more females occupying seats than we do have males in these high-level courses. Pretty close to one another, but the females are a little bit higher in terms of their pursuit of these higher-level courses. We monitor that. We look at that. And that's why, back to that data presentation in January, you see a lot of those data were broken down into subgroups. We want to be certain that we are aligned with the percentages of participation, or achievement, or infractions and consequences to the percentages of those groups that exist in our total population. So the real questions came about with respect to the language in policy 832 and the process to adopt that policy. And in my professional opinion, there was nothing about the process to adopt that policy, to review it as a committee, move it through first and second reading, that violated policy that exists currently. Where there are questions is really around how much conversation we had prior to administration bringing that PNN to the board and the policy committee for consideration. At the time, I was leading a heavy focus on equity in the district in my efforts to make sure that we were aware in the ways that we needed to be aware, in response to some concerns that had been brought to my attention. This policy, at the forefront, at the onset, represented the spirit of where we wanted to move as a district. However, I recognize that it can be a real benefit when implementing such policy, to have more voices at the table, as we've talked about. And PSBA actually recommends that, that you bring together a committee of community individuals. It's a diverse representative committee, and you have conversations about what's in this policy. You develop a common understanding and a common language for where you want to be as a district. So what I have suggested to the policy committee is that I will form that committee. I will form that diverse representative committee from our community. And we'll look at policy 832. Just as we would revise policies and consider them at the policy committee level, I know I'm using that word a lot, committee, this one is different. And the suggestion is, the recommendation by both PSBA and some representatives of the policy committee, is that we expand that conversation, which we often do, and get their feedback, and consider some of the aspects that are a part of this policy. Any revisions would be recommended to the policy committee, and then to the board for first reading. So I would like to lead that work this summer and be prepared to bring some information back to the policy committee in September, as part of the work that we're doing around equity. And as part of my effort to help others in our community really understand what that means right now, this work would be really meaningful. Yeah.
So I think another thing that we just need to be mindful of when we're talking about a policy such as educational equity, is even going back even further to one of your slides where you head up, what the percentage of special education students in comparison to PV, to the state, when we're looking at different minority populations. So example, you pointed out the black population being 8.1%, I think it was, versus 4.5%. Those discrepancies, that disproportionate representation, that can either be over-representation or under-representation. So we're talking about gifted, black and Hispanic students tend to be underrepresented. And in gifted populations, Asian-Americans tend to be overrepresented, would be an example. Policies such as this help to attack that issue and ensure that we're setting up a situation, or setting the stage so that all students have an opportunity to learn, and we're not feeding into and allowing that disproportionate representation to continue. And I think that's an important piece that, you know, I think people see that word educational equity, and they think it's, oh, this is just a race thing, or this is, and it's not. It's really making sure that all of our students have an opportunity to learn. Don't.
So I appreciate the point. There are lots of examples of where we consider equity. And it was brought to my attention recently, even in the lunchroom, my apologies, even in the lunchroom, for students with diabetes, gluten allergies, peanut allergies, and not having the information they need to make choices, so that they can't purchase lunch in the ways that other students can. So this has been brought to my attention by some individuals that are very cognizant of this. So how do we communicate that information so that it's more, it's, it's more openly available, and all students have access to the cafeteria and what's available in the cafeteria? So equity applies to lots of different areas, to lots of what we do. So to your point, I appreciate it. Yeah.
So when you're developing in your action step plan, I know last summer, for example, I guess it was two summers ago, we had the, the Health and Wellness Task Force for the development of that particular policy, right? So I, I'm curious if you would be able to talk a little bit about how you're going to create this representative committee? Are you intending to reach out to different individuals? How are you looking to solicit different voices?
Million-dollar question. I am thinking about a couple of different ways of doing that. One way was to administer a survey in my weekly message and say, hey, who's interested in maybe participating in this work? The other would be to actually tap individuals that I know from each of these stakeholder groups in the community. I want the group to be the right number so that the work gets done. And I feel as if I know a lot of people that I believe would present a, a diverse set of views and perspectives that would really contribute to the conversation, which is what I want. So I haven't really decided, but those are the two options I'm considering right now as I think about that committee and the composition of that committee. And it would span community members, parents, students, teachers, administrators, so those key stakeholder groups.
So this was sort of alluded to, and, and this is, you're really, this, you're biting off a lot for July and August, and for only three to four meetings. off a lot for July and August, and for only three to four meetings. So I, I guess the reason that I asked that question is because in terms of facilitation, I just am curious as to exactly how the discussion will be facilitated, if it will be literally by your agenda, or if you plan on bringing out someone that maybe is, has more of an expertise specifically associated with this policy? And when I say that, I, I think that I, I say that because of the fact that, as I had mentioned during Policy Committee, we, we already sort of have had conversations in an open public forum with a facilitator that we hired to facilitate these types of conversations about equity and inclusion. And so I'm curious as to how you're going to get this diverse group in the room when they didn't come to the room in the first place.
My, my thinking is that if individuals are invited and they would have to accept the invitation, it would be different from, it would be very overt, and it would be different from just publicizing there is this opportunity to come out. I, I think that in my experience, sometimes individuals aren't sure what, what happens when there's a committee meeting on the district calendar. Lots of people are very familiar with it, but I don't know that everybody is comfortable just showing up at the high school library and knowing what to expect and feeling okay with that. So I was going to really make phone calls or send messages and have conversations with individuals that I thought I could talk to, to explain. I'd like to sort of, you know, I'm thinking about how these meetings would be carried out so that, that I could create a comfortable setting, a safe space, and actually get to some real rich conversation about the topic. So I was going to do it and just really go out of my way to let people know what's expected, what's expected of them. They've got to make the meetings and they have to be willing to have a voice.
I appreciate you saying that. Yeah, I just feel like that's exactly the dialogue that was, we led into with those meetings that we've already had about this, you know, creating a, a rich conversation in a safe place. So hopefully that work, that work will continue with the same sentiment.
So if it's okay, I'll transition. So the last celebration for everybody is that we are winding down the school year. Next Tuesday's the last day of school. So this week, we have three more full days of school. Friday is the first half-day. I know our students and staff are really excited. And Tuesday, we wind down for underclassmen, and they'll celebrate their last half-day of school this year, and then hopefully have a great summer. And with that, a little longer than usual, my apologies for that, but that ends my report.
Any questions? Solicitors' report, Mr. Subers?
I have no report.
No report. Any Board members have any committee reports? Seeing none. I apologize. Mr. Fountain? Oh, Ms. Evans-Brockett?
I, I just wanted to give a PSBA update, that negotiations for the 2022-23 budget are underway with the deadline for the June 30th spending plan near, if we can get there. While PSBA continues to advocate for increases in the basic education funding subsidy, including the Level Up Initiative, they are also focusing on three other specific funding needs, and they're asking school board members and community members to join in a three-week campaign by reaching out to your legislators on three critical budget issues. During Week One is special education and asking for a minimum of two hundred, two hundred million increase, two hundred million dollar increase in the budget. Week Two is supporting the mental health needs of students, asking for a minimum of sixty million dollars. And Week Three is for career and technical education, asking for a minimum of twenty five million dollars. So I encourage everyone to reach out to your local legislators and ask them to use the money that, that is sitting there to fund education.
The joint operating committee for the technical met at the tech school for the first time this past month. Won't be doing it again for a while, but they did meet at the tech school, and a large part of it was to honor some of the students. We had eight PV students who were honored from competitions that had been taking place, and we were able to, Ms. Mares and I were able to have our pictures taken with them when they had their pictures and everything came up. Following that, the steering committee that I sit on for them as well did meet on the 25th, and they are starting to put together plans and ideas for improving and increasing not only offerings, types of courses, looking to see what's going to be most effectively used to help our kids be ready for the community and for the jobs that are out there, possibly change in some shops. So it was a very productive meeting and was also held right there on the campus in the restaurant. So we actually got to eat in the restaurant as well, so.
It was almost ready when we were there. Yeah. Any other reports? Yep, Dr. Collier.
Just real quick, the Wellness Committee didn't meet because of the Path to Health and Wellness that was going on that week, and I know that attendance for that wasn't as high as we had anticipated, but things were recorded, so I would encourage anybody who was not able to attend, who might still have an interest in those topics, to access that through our website.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Keenan?
At the MCIU meeting on May 25th, there was a celebration of twelve retirees and dinner. Overview of the Head Start Program was presented. Doctor Speaker talked about the day on the Hill, specifically with respect to increased attention and financial support for early intervention programs. Let's see, the MCIU approved budget items for the cost of living adjustment for the Head Start Program, Head Start Quality Improvement, Institutionalized Children's Program, and General Admission Administrative Services. MCIU approved, let's see, the big one. Education, let's see, the Bargaining Unit Agreement with the Education Association for the period of July 20, July through, from 2022 to 2025. So that's a big, big thing that happened. The collective bargaining agreement was approved. And that is pretty much it. The next meeting is June 22nd, and that's all I have.
Microphone's better with the microphone working. Items that represent standard routine business of the Board are included in the Consent Agenda. Board members may request to have any of the items removed for discussion. The consent, the consent items as of June 6, 2022 are listed on everyone's agenda. Additional agenda items may be added to consent during the work session. The following items will be added to Consent Agenda for approval at the June 13th Business Meeting, and they are in front of you. 703, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 801, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. And with that, we'll go to Education. Mr. Fountain?
Item 4.01, I will turn the floor over to Ms. Smith for an update.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for some time this evening. We have just three main topics for you, as Dr. Russell covered Health and Safety already, just a little bit on curriculum technology, and then some updates on some of our resources. We have one additional curriculum guide to bring to you this evening. That is the NOVA Lab, or Innovation Lab. This is a course that currently already exists in our high school. We just simply did a review of that curriculum on our new template. You can see the units and the course description. It's really a course around design thinking, very much driven by student interest, and this course does fulfill a requirement of technology credit requirement for their graduation. So that document is in the Education Updates. It would be on review now for any questions that you may have or pose, and then we would bring it back in August for official approval before the start of the school year. We also have several items for requesting your approval this month that we brought to you last month and were vetted through the Education Committee. They are all listed in one of the action items in the Education Section. I just want to point out one of them, which was the Black History Course, just to publicly indicate that we did make some revisions to that guide from the, the last public meeting. We did find a typo in there, as well as we added some additional content based upon some of the feedback that we got. We also have lots of resources that were vetted through our Education Committee, and I won't speak about each one of them individually, but we do have here in front of me, I have samples of some of the resources that we are recommending. Anything that is completely digital, like Pebble Go, we have included in the chart some links of where you might be able to see demos of that. These are resources that go with the courses that we are bringing forth, like the Black History Course. We also need to update the resource for our American Government Course. We have the Pebble Go and Pebble Go Next, which is really a research base for our elementary school libraries. A renewal of Math in Focus and Collections, which are currently resources that we use in district, but our subscriptions are up. And then Foundations is just some additional print materials and manipulative tips for our students to ensure that we are implementing that with fidelity. And you can see here the costs associated and where we are funding those. The majority of them are funded from 22, 23 Ready to Learn, which means upon approval, should they be approved this month, we hold those until July 1st to then place those orders out of Ready to Learn. And the Foundations was actually budgeted as part of our SER III when the Board approved that for early literacy support. The second topic is interactive panels. We've talked about this a couple of months at our Education Committee, and Mr. Ganesh and I have been working collaboratively after the installation of 110 panels at our middle schools to bring forth to you a plan for the purchase of additional panels to outfit the rest of our classrooms. We feel very strongly that this is a tool for our classrooms that should just be the standard part of what a classroom looks like here at Perkyelman Valley. We did a survey of those 110 teachers, had about forty responses back, just to get some information from them about how has that implementation gone, what are they seeing as the benefits and the experiences? There was a lot more included in the Education Committee presentation, but I tried to just highlight a couple of things for you here, including how frequently are they using it? You can see that those teachers are really using this pretty much on a daily basis in their classrooms, a class-period basis, to provide instruction to students from direct instruction to actually having students share their work on the screen, to annotating over top of documents to really engage our students in that instruction. And you can see we do have students using the panels, and I included just some of the open-ended responses that we received as well. Additional survey results, we wanted to also ask them, because the panel is a panel, and then it has its own operating system. So you purchase a separate kind of little Dell computer that slides into the back of it that operates it to really make it, it's basically a big tablet on the wall for them to be able to control. And we wanted to see their feedback on if that was working for them, or if they felt like they could use their own laptop that they have and connect that. And you can see overwhelmingly here, having that separate operating system really allows them additional flexibility in their classroom, that they are not bound to their particular laptop or could have two things going on at the same time. And we also asked them if they preferred the interactive panel, or their old wireless projector, or even a wired projector, as you can see, similar to what we have set up here. And again, overwhelmingly, the panel is the preferred mode of being able to share and project in their classrooms. We also then asked them to rate the statements. I know there's a little hard to, to see the actual statements, so I put there, every teacher should have a panel as a standard tool in their classroom, and you can see the agree and strongly agree are the highest two there. And we also wanted to know if they felt like they could share these, because there were questions about, do we really need one in each classroom? And again, you can see pretty clearly that sharing this is not really feasible, as they want it available to be able to use at any time in their classrooms and not necessarily having to sign it out to be able to use. So Mr. Ganesh and I have gone through several renditions of how might we get and purchase the remaining panels without any impact to our budgets? And so we have proposed to you this purchase plan here. We estimate needing approximately another 268 panels, some carts, because some classrooms are just not conducive to mounting them, and then some installation materials. We did receive a grant from the Foundation, which you will also see in the Business Section, for the purchase of six panels, which we will move forward with. Our next phase, we are proposing to you to purchase 175 panels this summer and hopefully have them installed or be installed right at the fall once we receive them. And based upon looking at the technology budget through E-Rate and some different things in his budget that have been falling off, we're able to do that lease purchase for those 175 panels across four years. And you'll actually see that action item on this month's agenda under the Business Section, the financing of that piece. They put together those leases for you. And again, that fits into the existing technology budget. We then looked at, oops, sorry, using Ready to Learn for some of those additional panels, and we really phased that out across the next three years then in terms of what that looks like. Those numbers may adjust as we see what curriculum resources come in at and what those costs are. If there's funds remaining there or in SER III, we would be able to purchase those last couple of them, and hopefully do that sooner than what we have there, but we are prepared to as well take it out that far if we need to. And then some updates here. So I wanted to provide you with a little bit of an update on Star, as you have approved the purchase of Star Reader and Star Math. They are both universal screeners that we have purchased for the secondary setting based upon our data analysis and presentation in January and the lack of a universal screener in these areas. They are both progress monitoring tools. They help to drive instructional planning, forecast proficiency of our students, and measure student growth. The difference in them really is the timeline in which we purchase them. So we are much farther along with Star Reader. The Board approved that in February. We've done all our roster and tech integration, and we actually had training in April, and we've piloted that with students in grade six through nine. And we are at the point right now where we are actually looking at, well, what does that data look like and how will we use that? And have that data now to start right away with the start of next school year and getting feedback from teachers. We do have additional professional development prepared for this summer, as well as for the start of next school year, so that that's something we can do three times a year next year. And again, that ongoing data analysis. The Star Math was purchased a little bit later. That was Board-approved in April, so we are still in the process of all that roster and tech integration. We had hoped to have a small pilot happen this year, but given all the other testing with PSSAs and Keystone's and other things, this was just not something that we were prepared to do a pilot with this year. So we'll do summer training and then be ready to start the year with that. I wanted to then show you what our assessment schedules are beginning to look like. This is our current assessment schedule for this current school year at the elementary level, and you can see just in that left box, some of the things that we administer, the FMPs, the DIBBLES are really that early literacy. We have our MAP assessments, which are diagnostic assessments, benchmarks, which are aligned directly to the standards. Then we have our PSSA, and the COGAT is actually a cognitive achievement test. It's really one of those screeners we use for gifted, and we do that in, at this particular time, we did that in third grade. The next slide is very similarly, what are those assessments that we use this year in our secondary setting, which again included some benchmarks, PSSAs or Keystone's, the civics exam, and then at the high school, we have PSATs, SATs, and APs. So we have started to think about these drafts for next year, and please let me state clearly, these are just drafts. We know we have lots of revision to do on them yet. We'll have an assessment committee meeting to get other feedback. The elementary draft for next year, you will notice, we have, are suggesting the change of the COGATS from third grade to second grade, which means we'd have one year where we would administer that in both second and third grade. That's why you see that twice. We have talked about fall screeners for all students, like those FMP and DIBBLES, especially in the primary grades, K1 and 2, doing that three times a year. But for our older students, third, fourth, and fifth, that possibly in the middle of the year, the winter and in the spring, only repeating those assessments for students that are not at or above grade level at that time, or those students that are in Tier Two and Three interventions. Really trying to balance the number of assessments with the amount of time it takes and figure out which ones are paying off most for us to drive our instruction and meeting our needs. So I'm pretty confident that that third, fourth, and fifth grade, it looks really full there in the middle of the year, doesn't it? And we're working together with our principals to determine which of those assessments might we really want to focus on. So I imagine that that will look a little less light when we bring that to you in the fall, trying to figure out between MAP and Lincoln which ones are really best meeting our needs. The secondary schedule, then, you'll see here, the inclusion of Star Reader and Star Math. And again, these are just tentative timelines, trying to figure out where might be the best place to fit those in. And remember again, Star Reader and Star Math are really intended to be much more efficient, 20 minutes within the classroom. So it's not like we have to run a testing schedule, it's just part of classroom instruction. But you will notice that there is no more MAP assessments on sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. That was removed actually this year. We had determined to stick with the Lincoln benchmarks. And you'll notice the Lincoln benchmarks are only two times a year, once in the fall and then once shortly before the PSSA. We do administer a math Lincoln benchmark, again, at the end of the year, really for placement purposes, and we're looking at that whole process for placement as well. So again, we're continuing to revise these, but I wanted you to see just what some of our initial thoughts were for next year. but I wanted you to see just what some of our initial thoughts were for next year. So I did want to also talk about, what is the process we use? And I want to use the example of math as an area that we've really been looking at this particular year. So first and foremost, we identified through our data presentation that you need to have a universal screener. You need to have a way of screening your students to identify who needs enrichment, who needs remediation, where do we target our instruction? And that really, if I use math as the example, that's our first step with that Star Math, and now being able to administer that. Then you need to analyze that data. Teachers need to look at it, what do I do in my classroom? What do I do with this small group, or this group, or these individual students, or the whole group? And which students might we want to identify for an intervention that might be in addition to my Tier 1 instruction in my classroom? So in terms of math, secondary, since we identified that as an area of need, certainly Dr. Sax has been working with our principals, as well as data teams at each meeting, sorry, at each building. She's been meeting with the teaching teams and really looking at that data. So we've started to do that. We don't have the Star Math data, but we're using our Lincoln Benchmark data and anything else that we have from classroom assessments to begin the process of those data team meetings. Teachers have really started collaborating more by looking at that data, by talking to each other and saying, wow, your students did better in this particular area than mine did. What did you do differently than I did? And how can we learn from each other? Middle school math has also worked very diligently on common assessments, so that students, regardless of who the teacher may be, we are assessing them on the same content, and again, being able to have those collaborative conversations. All of that goes to help support that Tier 1 instruction, which is a strong core curriculum, which is what all students get. Formative and summative assessments, having solid resources and best instructional practices. So we also have planned for next year a curriculum review in the area of middle school math, which will look at the curriculum, what we teach, the resources, and the practices, how we teach that. And including some professional development that'll actually start this summer for math teachers. So all of that, that universal screener, Tier 1, all of that is actually in process for secondary math. Some of that's hard for me to quantify for you, to say, here's an improvement here or there, because it's really conversations, professional development, and practices, that we don't necessarily see a direct result in a score or a number that I can give you yet. Although we are very hopeful when those PSSA results come back, that we will certainly see increases. The Tier 2 and 3 then, if you go to the next slide, is really what are those next steps? So we're ready to now begin to take those next steps, because we've been working on Tier 1. That would be looking at, what are the students that need small group interventions? And what are those interventions that we're going to use? And in order however, to do the interventions, you need to have structures in place. When are students going to receive those interventions? And we are looking at our middle school schedule to look at, are there additional times to what is there? How can we use advisory period differently? We also have new MTSS facilitator positions that we're in the process of filling, and how will those positions fit into this and lead things? And recommending, as I said to you, a schedule. So once the structure and the schedule's in place, and we have an opportunity to review some of those resources, we certainly want to identify what are some of the resources that we can use in interventions. I have pictured in the bottom right, one that seems to come up in recent conversations is Freckle. It's very similar to something we currently have, which is called Exact Path. It takes a score. For example, right now, our MAP scores feed into Exact Path, and it creates an individual learning path for students, so that I can practice what I need, you can practice what it is that you need. So we continue to investigate those. Freckle just happens to be one that is aligned with Star Math, that we have been looking at, and we're working on a plan for, is that the one we want to settle in on? Have we compared it to enough other resources to be able to make a recommendation? And then how would we utilize that? We want to make sure we have a strong plan in place, that if we're recommending the use of funds, we actually know when that will be used as well, as we've not been the best with Exact Path at seeing the results of that. And again, we just continue that ongoing data analysis. So a lot of work has been done, and we do have plans for what will come next, particularly in secondary math. I'll move on then to virtual program comparison. On the agenda tonight, you will see, we are seeking the approval for the Virtual High School, or VHS agreement, which is an annual agreement that comes forth. And that just prompted some questions about, what is this? And how similar is it or different is it to the other programs we use? And why do we have maybe so many different partnerships? And really, it does come down to, they all have different strengths. And we really try to partner or match up students' needs and what courses they're taking with the right program for them, as well as looking at the financial impacts to that. So this is just a small table, trying to summarize for you the type of programs available and the costs for each of those. An Edgeseer was something that we used several years ago. We used it for part of our summer credit recovery, and part of what was PV Virtual here at the high school. We were at that time looking for something a little bit more rigorous academically. We have then partnered with Montgomery Virtual Program through our intermediate unit. You can see, just looking across that programs available, a lot more programs available for our students through MVP than were previously through Edgeseer. We are also right now exploring VLN partners. We've been talking, Dr. Russell and I, about what might be something that maybe is a little bit more of a flexible virtual program. If a student needs, you know, maybe homebound for a week or two, or there's some reason they're transitioning back from a different program, and virtual would be appropriate, what could be a little bit more flexible? The majority of the MVP is really based upon a semester. They do have flexibility in what they call homebound, but we're also exploring VLN. So you'll see, I don't have that totally filled in, but that may be something we bring to you in the future. But VHS is really very different. This is a membership that we pay through the IU. It's a consortium program. Basically, we have to commit a teacher to teach a course. Next year, we have a teacher who has agreed to teach the statistics class. And then students from any other districts that participate in this consortium can take that course led by our teacher. And our students have access to any of the other programs that may be offered by a teacher from North Penn, or Massakti, if they are participating. The benefit to this is it is usually higher level courses, AP and honors courses. It is taught by an actual teacher in a physical school, although it is virtual. And it has a significantly reduced cost, if you look at what that costs are per course. So it really is an advantage to our students. We do get 40 seats, 20 for the fall, 20 for the spring, as part of that annual membership, but we can purchase more seats if we want to. And last thing I have for your summer program, and just an update on what we are offering. We launched this a couple of weeks ago. These are our elementary offerings. Anything colored in blue is through partnership with Penn State. Anything in white is offered by our own teachers. The next slide has our secondary camps. Anything in blue is through partnership with Riverbend. Green is partnership with Flux. And you can see a lot more here is actually offered by our own staff here. And we do have one camp that does extend into our high school students. We have two of our physics teachers are doing, it's just rocket science for both middle school and high school. And then we wanted to provide you with an update on our staffing, as well as our enrollments to this point. So for our enrichment programs in the K-11 or K-12 setting, you can see that we have several courses here. Again, anything on this slide that's in green has no cost to families, because it is taught by our staff. The others that are not colored are through partnerships, and there was a cost passed on to families. Right now, we are fully staffed with a coordinator, with a nurse, and with all of the teachers that we need to run all of these programs. But if you look across there, we're about 50% filled. That's very different than last year at this time, where everything kind of really filled up very quickly. And we've talked, there's probably numerous reasons for last summer compared to this summer. People were anxious to get out into re-acclimating back into their schools and being with other students. So we'll continue to watch this. We do have minimums set on some of these to run, particularly those that had a cost associated, to ensure that it's cost-effective for the district. Six of these classes have already filled completely. Things like Totally Tech, Drama for Kids, some of those that have been longstanding here, run in the district. Thirty of the 61 classes, though, have not met their minimums yet. So we did talk today about re-advertising and giving a deadline to families, so that if we have to cancel something, they have sufficient time to maybe sign up for the exact same camp, but a different week, if they can make that work in their schedule. And then the next slide, I think, has for you the side for remediation, which is Lift. This one, we are also struggling with filling the seats. This one is by invitation. So the teachers and the principals look at the data, like I just talked about, from our assessment schedule, and they identify students that would benefit from this type of summer learning. It is a longer program than our enrichment camps are. And we do, again, that invitation. We have reached out multiple times to some families. We have gone to kind of our second list, our third list of students to invite, and you can see where we're at at this point with filling it. We have all the staff we need to run this. It's at no cost to families, transportation's provided. So we're going to continue to see which students that we can encourage their families to have their children come in this summer to participate in this. And I believe I will turn it over to Dr. Boyd for ESY.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. So Mrs. Smith just spoke about the remediation program. So for some of our students who are special education but do not qualify for ESY, that is a very nice opportunity for them to also participate in a summer learning program. For students who qualify, again, these are just some of the reminders around the parameters for ESY. Again, it's required by IDEA. And students need to qualify based on their IEP goals. There's seven eligibility factors, and it's determined through the IEP team meeting. If we go to the next slide, what we talk about here is where do students go to attend an extended school year program? We have an in-district program, which is center-based. It's on a two-day or a four-day option for our students, again, based on their needs. So for some of our students, their needs might, they might only be needed to attend our two-day program. Some of our other students may come for all four days. For our, some of our students, our secondary students, you'll see that we have them attending at the MCIU for the transition, the work, and the academic. So again, ESY is based on their goals. If they have functional or vocational skills, we deliver that service through the IU. Right now, we don't have those opportunities within the district to provide that. Dr. Russell spoke earlier about transition services and the work that we're doing to extend the opportunities that we have, so that we can educate our students here in district and not have to outsource to programs such as the IU or work-study type programs. So again, as we develop that, we anticipate that in the future years, we'll be able to bring some of our students back to programming here at Perkyomen Valley and not have to send them in contract with the IU for some of those services. For some of our other students, if we go back one slide, Dr. Russell, I just wanted to share that some of our students do attend out-of-district programs. That typically is our students who have more intensive needs and tend to be educated outside of Perkyomen Valley across their educational year. And so then that program continues through ESY. If we go to the next slide, what you can see right now is we have 90 students coming onsite as of today to attend our in-district program. We have 17 students that will be going to the MCIU, and we have 26 students who are attending out-of-district programs. In that 90 that are onsite, there are two students that currently during the school year attend through an approved private school, but they are able to come back, and we are able to program for them during the summer for their goals. The 90, the 117, and the 17, I apologize. We have a total of 119 students, Perkyomen Valley students, that qualified for ESY. And what you can see there is, I believe, what, 107 students of the 119 that qualified are currently attending. So we will do some outreach, we'll see if other students wish to attend. But again, they can choose not to attend ESY, even though they've qualified. And again, here's just a reminder of the program, that it will run for one month, from June 27th to July 27th, and it will be housed at South Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. And I know Dr. Russell did this as part of her updates. So any questions on anything in the ed updates this evening?
The question that I have is about the secondary math assessments and the scores. And I guess, we're really, obviously, we've been talking about it all year. We're looking to approve the math scores. So one of the questions that I had come my way was how, and I'm paraphrasing, but how are the scores looked at for each grade level, considering the fact that there are students in each grade level that take their grade-appropriate test, but are not actually learning that grade content? And I just, I feel like as though the results are skewed, possibly in a negative way. And so the conversation that I had, for example, sixth grade math, you have sixth graders that are taking seventh grade math, and you have sixth graders that are taking eighth grade math, right? And so when PSS, when PSSAs come, all of the sixth graders take the sixth grade PSSA, and yet they're not really teed up in pace with that content. So then they're forced to kind of like relearn that information in a truncated amount of time to prepare for the test, and stop learning their accelerated coursework. And so I think that there's a lot of room for, for problem. For, like I said, that's a problematic result, in my mind. So the conversation that I had on a 12-year-old level was that the kids that are taking seventh and eighth grade math as sixth graders should technically know the sixth grade material and be able to catch up and take the test. But the feedback that I got was that that is not only unfair, it's unrealistic to expect that individual child to then deliver on a test of content that they're not actually learning that year. So I'm curious as to how we are able to actually improve our scores if the system itself is flawed.
Very observant point, and one that I would, I would agree with you. The logistics of that implementation, the state requires you to assess the students in the grade in which they are in, irregardless of what level of math they may be in. So you're exactly right. Teachers will, you know, I'm an accelerated student, I'm sixth grade, but I'm taking eighth grade math. A teacher will take some time, as it gets closer to that assessment time, and review the concepts that we do expect, that because they're accelerated, that student should be proficient in these particular areas. But we try to do a review of that, because they may not have seen that content for several years, one or two years. We do look at the data. We can break it out by the kids that were in this particular class or that class to see, and to really drill down to, are the students that are in an eighth grade math performing proficient or advanced on a sixth grade? And for the most part, and I'm generalizing here, they do perform proficient or advanced. The, where we see the greatest disparity in that is between the eighth grade students who take the math PSSA, and those that are in algebra and take the Keystone. They perform well on the algebra Keystone, because that's the course that they are in. And some of them do not score proficient or advanced on the eighth grade math. And that's always been something, how do you take all of this content, really two years' worth, and ensure that students receive that? And you know, we've done a lot in terms of looking at our standards alignment. We'll be looking at it again when we go through curriculum review, to ensure, how does that kind of get embedded and weaved in there? But also ensure that we're giving them truly the algebra content, that they need to do well on that. So it is a logistical piece. Most of our students do well, but particularly that Keystone and the math in eighth grade is one where we see that discrepancy.
So I guess, just acknowledging that, I guess, to follow up, when we review, and this is just sort of rhetorical, but when we review testing data as a metric for how successful our schools, teachers, and students are, I feel like we really need to focus in on some of the pitfalls of solely focusing and using standardized test scores as an indication of success. That's rhetorically my opinion.
One other thing I would just add is, we, you know, every year, we revise how we place students in the advanced math. And one of the reasons that we give that Lincoln Benchmark at the end of the year is we actually give the next year's benchmark. So that if I'm a sixth grader, I'm actually taking the seventh grade Benchmark, because we want to ensure that those students have mastered some of that next year's content before we place them in an accelerated course, to ensure that they've got that, or that they're able to quickly pick up on that. But it definitely has some flaws in the system. Mrs. Mares?
I have a question about the interactive panels. Excuse me, and I believe I heard you say that there are two options that you could, the teachers could actually use their devices that they have in the classroom, or they can have a separate iOS device that comes. Is that an additional cost?
Yes. So the, so the way we have packaged it is the panel and the Dell computer is about $3,600 packaged together. So yes, there would be a cost savings if we were to decide not to put that additional piece there. I'd have to defer to Mr. Ganesh on, it's a couple hundred dollars, I believe. $600, he's giving me the fingers back there, per device. So certainly, it could add up. I would say to you, again, you can see from the results from the teachers, that having the ability to have their own device that maybe is in the corner, and they've got whatever they need on there, and the panel that can be interacting with students, they find that to be really an advantage. Many of them did feel bound when their computer was connected to a projector. You can't just easily, I need to just go into this right now, because you may not want a student to see what you're going in and out of at that particular time. So they do prefer to have that separate operating device.
Have we, have we watched teachers and their interactive panels both, in both ways? Have someone, you, somebody else observed that? And seen that it actually is a very restrictive thing to have them using their own device?
Mrs. Leanhart, our instructional coach- Mrs. Leenhardt, our instructional coach, really, I give her credit for the implementation and the smoothness of that with one-on-one coaching for teachers. So she's been in the classrooms the most and spoken to teachers, and she would agree that this supports the direction of the teachers and what she sees happening. You know, I'm sure there, there was a small percentage of teachers here that, you know, not a big deal, that they could possibly connect their own particular laptop to that. I don't know, Mr. Ganesh, if there's anything you want to add to the feasibility or the operation of that.
So from, from what I have observed, one of the features that the teachers use is having the students come up to the interactive panels and interact with the content. So knowing that it's not their own personal computer, they feel much more comfortable in letting a classroom, I mean, the student interact with a classroom computer per se, a classroom content where, where it's a personal device, it's their Google Drive, their Gmail, that probably would be restricting our teachers a little bit more.
Anything else? Okay, thank you for the time.
Moving forward, item four point oh two is just the enrollment report for June twenty twenty-two for both P V as well as charter school enrollment. Item four point oh three, possibly the single most important item that we're going to be looking at this evening, is a request to approve four hundred and eighty students eligible to graduate from Perkioman Valley High School on June tenth, twenty twenty-two, as listed, contingent upon their satisfactory completion of the graduation requirements. And I would be delighted and honored to make that motion.
Is there a second? I have a second by Dr. Kohler, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Against nay, the four hundred and eighty students are now okay to graduate.
Item four point oh four, we'll be requesting to approve a contract with Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to continue participating in the Virtual High School V H S program for up to forty seats for one year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at a cost of fifty-seven hundred dollars, with the potential for purchasing additional seats at a cost of two hundred and sixty-five dollars a seat, no increase from twenty-one, twenty-two. Item.
We, we okay to move that to consent?
I just have one quick question. Do you know the interest? So I'm trying to figure out, is this driven by administration, or are there students that are interested? Do you know the interest level, and do you assume that we're going to fill the twenty and twenty, or?
You know, I, I apologize, I should have had that for this evening. I know that we presented that in past years, I'd have to look back. I think we filled out seventy-five percent of these seats, if not more, in the past. But I can, I can look for that and put that in the memo.
Any other questions or discussion? Can we move that to consent? Okay. Item four point oh five, request to approve the curriculum guide updates for Geo-Civics, Black History, K through five library, and Grade Five Music as presented at the May second, twenty twenty-two board meeting. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing none, can I move that to consent? Okay. Item four point oh six, request approval to purchase the following curriculum resources as listed as recommended by the Education Committee. Are there questions, thoughts, comments? Seeing none, we move that to consent? Item four point oh eight, requesting to, uh.
Four point oh seven first.
Oh seven, I missed one? I'm not real good at counting, so. Item four point oh seven, request to approve an agreement with Professional Learning Partnership for professional development sessions, coaching, and consultive, consultative services for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year funded by Title II. Questions or comments? Seeing none, move that to.
Consent.
Consent? Now, four point oh eight.
Are you going, is that why you wanted to skip to it?
Hmm, no, this is, this is pretty cool. I'm going to butcher his name, I'm sure, but I'm going to try. So, request to accept Gabriel Candido Fernandez, twelfth-grade high school student, exchange student from Brazil for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we move that to consent. Item four point oh nine, request to accept Candela Martin Garcia, eleventh-grade high school exchange student from Spain for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, move that to consent. And item four point one zero, request to approve Perkioman Valley School District Special Education Plan to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education on or before July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The plan has been made available for the public in each of the district schools, district office, and Schwenksville Library for the required twenty-eight days. Questions or comments?
I just wanted to see if the PDF will get updated for the final version because some of the pages are blank.
I'll turn that over to Dr. Boyd. She has inquired with the state about that and the way that it's populating once she pulls it from. It's an online report filing system, and the way that it was populating was not complete.
That is correct, so I'm waiting to hear from P D E, and as soon as it is, we will update that one section. It has to do with our identification methodology in terms of how we identify students for special education services, and we use the discrepancy model, so just so the board is clear on that. And then I believe it will simply be that statement. In the system, it's actually a drop-down menu, and we click on discrepancy model. So it's just not populating right now, P D E has not responded with an answer.
Other questions, comments? Move to consent? And that concludes my section.
Business, Ms. White?
Section five is business, five point oh one, Mr. Weaver's going to give a brief finance update.
A hundred and forty pages.
So, so amazingly, Ms. White, I remember about two hours ago, you said, oh, and we just don't want Mr. Weaver coming up and talking about safety and operations at nine o'clock at night. Well, here we are. Yes, okay. So, we're on, here we go. Okay, so to move forward tonight, just a quick update on capital projects, summer twenty twenty-two. So everybody's on board with where we're heading. Then we'll hit the athletic training services, we have good information to share with the school board and the public. A final general fund budget presentation, which is real quick, it's just a couple of snapshots of where we're at. And then we have an updated information on the bank leasing associated with the interactive panels and the Dell machines. So, real quick, this is a summary sheet that the Safety and Operations Committee has reviewed several times. It's actually been in the Finance Committee as well. We are committed to somewhere in the neighborhood of one point three million. We are working on the audit, high school auditorium lights. You will review and approve hopefully tonight the auditorium carpet replacement as part of that process. We also have the Middle School West athletic fields and the high school softball fields, which we brought back from last month. And we have some other items that we continue to work on and look at and gather some additional information that we just don't have yet. So right now, looking at what is on that, that spreadsheet, it will be somewhat less than one point nine million dollars that we will spend. We do have plenty of reserves in, in order, well, in excess of six million dollars. So just to let the full board know, I know that the different committee members do understand that we do have reserves set aside to pay for these projects. Athletic trainer services, due to the flexibility of the school board, you do know that our current contract with Kinetics has been expiring as of June thirty. We've been working hard and diligently with Mr. Felty, myself, and Mrs. Hurd to prep ourselves. We went out, we did an R F P process, we received those bids, and we thought it was wise for us. And we worked with the school board to reject those bids and enter into actual negotiations with these different firms. We went back out, we captured a fourth firm, which ended up being the actual recommend, recommended group. Saint Luke's University Health Network came through for us. We are recommending moving forward with a three-year contract. It is the lowest-cost bid for those other three providers. One, our, our current provider actually dropped out, and they let us know the Friday before we settled this. So last Friday, they let us know that they dropped out because they were losing their, their staff. They couldn't keep their staff on any longer, and they're not large enough to have other staff in reserves, which is another good point for Saint Luke's, it's a very large hospital, university, health network to be able to help support our athletes and Mr. Felty in that process. Dr. Russell, if you would move forward, here are the numbers. The good thing is, is there's the one hundred and forty thousand dollars solid for the three years of the contract. You can see where the others did sit and stand. In addition to that, we are working on finalizing, there is a sponsorship component to this, which is exactly what the school board had tasked us for going back out and, and enter into these negotiations. So the offset to that is a positive one hundred and thirty thousand dollar cash flow. It is a one-time twenty-five thousand dollar, hey, you're a new sponsor for Saint Luke's Hospital, which is good, good for us. And then one hundred and five thousand dollars over the three years of that contract. All told, that is a one hundred and thirty thousand dollar influx of revenues for us to set aside for sponsorship purposes. So the net contract over the end of three years is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and you can see where that compares to the other three. So again, it, it worked out for us. We put a lot of time and effort into that, and I'm very, very thankful to bring that forward to the school board because I'm not sure what we would have done would not have happened. But as it turned out, it worked out. So that would be the recommendation that we enter in with Saint Luke's University Health Network for July first, twenty twenty, through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. We continue to work on the contract with Mr. Subers and his staff, Dave Comer specifically. We have a draft contract that we're working out the details right now, and we're hopeful that we have that summarized by Monday night. Here are some of the details, I'm not going to get into that, they, they've been posted. You can look at it at your leisure. There are a lot of good, positive impacts to this contract and this deal for us, including team physicians, all kinds of offers from Saint Luke's University to come in with their staff to help with our students, our student athletes, and our teachers as well, to help us facilitate better living, better learning for our students overall. And there are some other good, positive points there, you can read at your leisure. Again, very, very positive. So there's the recommendation to move forward. And as a reminder, we did add another fifty thousand dollars into our budget. That was the last slot that we had, the last time we looked at this in the Finance Committee. We are going from ninety thousand dollars firm to one hundred and forty thousand dollars firm moving forward with this recommendation. Any questions on that? Again, thank you so much for allowing us to go out and to do some face-to-face negotiations. We, we really appreciate that. Moving forward to tonight's budget presentation, remember, this is the final budget presentation. We're setting this up for official action. We have the one change at the lower left-hand corner for the athletic trainer staffing, that's that fifty thousand dollar final piece. You look at what we've already set aside for fund balance uses, and that brings us to a one point seven-three percent tax increase. Our goal throughout was, A, to make it to the Act One index of three point four, then to whittle it down a little bit more. And I do know in working with, in conversations with various board members over, over the process, we've been at two point five, we've been at two, we aimed for one point five, we ended up at a one point seven-three, and we would recommend moving forward with that. We feel that that's a pretty good process for us, knowing where the variables are as far as the state funding, and knowing that we've captured an awful lot of that information and shared that detail throughout the entire budget process. So our recommendation would be to move forward at a one point seven-three percent. Dr. Russell, there you go. And as is usual, now we, we add this slide back in here, the average house that is assessed value at one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That means essentially the tax bill would go up one hundred and eight dollars or nine dollars a month at the one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We have some other slides in here that just show you how we've come up to that. A key component to that is our final general fund projection for June thirty, twenty twenty-two. Again, that is a critical component for us as we continue to look at our financial status, not only how we're doing for this current year, how we predict moving forward in future years, and where that helps us to evaluate where we want to end up with our ultimate real estate tax increase for the next year. We are still predicting and projecting that will end up a little bit less than that maximum cap of eight percent of our, of our expenditures, but overall, still solid financial footing for the school district moving forward. Here is historical use of fund balance, again, this was a spreadsheet snapshot that we take out when we get closer towards final budget presentation. It helps give everybody, the Finance Committee and the school board and the public reassurance as far as us understanding where we're at and what we've utilized as far as terms of use of fund balances and where our Act One index has been compared to where we actually ended up. One other item to mention is that the Homestead-Farmstead, the, the tax relief that the state provides on a yearly basis, we did get a bump in our, in our tax relief increase. Remember, that is revenue neutral to the district. So we simply take what we regenerate on the, on the local revenue side, we drop that down to the state revenue line item, and there is no impact for our overall budget. However, for our taxpayers, that means that when we finalize this number, they should look for a, a reduction in their real estate tax bill equivalent to about two hundred and eighty dollars. This past year, we, we were officially at two hundred and thirty-three, forty-eight, and we'll wrap that number in, and you'll see that final number when we do the resolution. That is the last item on the finance, on the business section for tonight. So one other thing, just to catch everybody up on this, we have been working with an ad hoc student activity fees committee. We reviewed the multiple different prospects associated with this, history, where do we want to go with this? We will continue that ad hoc committee into next fiscal year. We know we have a lot of work to do on that. However, I just wanted to report out that the recommendation, again, for what it means and to bring it forward, and we would agree with that recommendation, that we waive the student activity fees for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We did that for this year, it has not impacted our budget at this point in time, and we would recommend that as we continue to move out of the pandemic. And so that would be the recommendation, and you'll see that as, as an option for tonight for the school board's consideration. Just to summarize, the bank leasing for the interactive panels and the, and the PCs, the lower part is the four-year term, that fits into our budget prospect, process. And, and the rate was great at a three point two-six percent. Santander is the recommended group. We could not fit the three-year lease in because the offcoming leases do not, are less than what that three-year lease would have been. So while it is slightly a better rate by, you know, three point two-five versus three point two-six, the recommendation is to go with a four-year term. It fits into our lease profile moving forward as we continue to move from the pandemic funds and how we funded this one-to-one project. We do know that as we continue to move out, we will need a recycling plan that I do know Mr. Ganesh and Mrs. Smith is working on, and has may have actually shared at, at various times in the Education Committee. So the recommendation is to go four-year term, Santander Bank, and it fits into our current budget, so no need to adjust. Okay, I think that's it, maybe, all right. Any questions for anybody? Again, presuming that we've got the board approval, we'll move forward with the budget at the one point seven-three percent. Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Noble effort, Mr. Weaver, thank you for being a good sport. I counted ten minutes from your walking up and back, I, I would, very nice. All right, five point oh two is the grants and donations report, are there any comments? Okay, seeing none, five point oh three is the approval of the, is a motion to approve a grant from the P V Education Foundation in the amount of nine thousand, nine thousand nine hundred dollars to purchase shading and install a permanent structure to support the shades over the existing outdoor classroom at Schwenksville Elementary. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, can we move that to consent? Seeing none, can we move that to consent? 5.04, have a delay here, is a motion to approve an extended school year ESY contracts for summer 2022 to meet requirements of students' IEPs. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, move that to consent. 5.05, it's a motion to approve special education contracts and cost of services for the 2223 school year to meet requirements of students' IEPs through out-of-district placements and special services provided to students within our district programs. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, move that to consent. 5.06, motion to approve the student meal prices as listed for the 23223 school year as recommended by the business office. It's a no, no increase from the current prices. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, move that to consent. 5.07, it's a motion to approve the continuation of an employee assistance program, EAP, for a full-time and part-time, for all full-time and part-time staff members facilitated by St. Luke's Penn Foundation in Kinsella, Pennsylvania, beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 at a cost of $1.50 per member per month. Based on 752 current employees, the total cost will be $1128 a month or $13,536 per year. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, move that to consent. 5.08, teletherapy services agreement. Motion to approve an agreement with e-therapy to provide teletherapy services effective June 14, 2022 through August 31st, 2022. An hourly rate as stated in the agreement pending final review by the district solicitor. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, move that to consent. 5.09 is a motion to approve a lease agreement with Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for a Head Start program at the Schwangsville Elementary School beginning September 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 at no cost to the district. Are there any comments or questions?
I know that Schwangsville was curious about the space available.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Schwangsville currently hosts both the Head Start classroom and an MCIU special education classroom. We have asked the IU to consider moving the special education classroom. We'd like to keep the Head Start classroom. Several of the students that are part of that end up being our students and attending Schwangsville. So the IU is looking into that. And that's, the the questions actually were originally posed because the kindergarten registrations are pretty high at Schwangsville this year. It's quite unusual, but they have the highest current number of registrations for kindergarten, so they could use the space. So we have asked them to consider the special education group as opposed to the Head Start.
Are there any other questions? Are we okay to move that to consent?
Would that mean that where would Head Start then be moved to? Where would Head Start then be moved to?
Head Start will stay at Schwangsville. It's the special education group. It's a, it's an IU classroom of preschool severely disabled students that is also housed at Schwangsville. So that would go to another district-wide classroom in the county somewhere.
County?
Yeah, so it's a county classroom that's hosted by the IU. Well, it's organized by the IU, hosted by us. So there's lots of those classrooms sprinkled throughout Montgomery County, and we've asked the county, the IU, I'm sorry, to consider another spot for that one just because of the increasing enrollment there at Schwangsville.
When, when you mean that you're asking them to consider another spot, is that a nice way of saying we're not going to host it next year?
It it is, it is an effort to politely ask them to inquire basically because of space issues, and they're used to that. You know, they work with all sorts of schools, and they try and find space for these classrooms. And we've had it for several years, and we're seeing this uptick in kindergarten students. So the principal would really benefit from having one of those two classrooms. And we've recommended keep Head Start and maybe shift that one. And we're working with the IU to do that. And I'll just, just add, just since we're on the topic, we have a classroom at West that's also an IU classroom. So students from all over the county, and we have one here at the high school as well.
Are we okay to move that to consent? Okay. 510 is the approval of legal services. The motion is to renew Fox Rothschild LLC as district solicitor to include special education, student services, and all legal matters related to district operations in accordance with their fee agreement effective July 1st, 2022. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 511, it's approval of limited power of attorney. It's a motion to ratify the limited power of attorney to Blum USA. I guess that's how that's pronounced. Inc. to act on behalf of Perkyman Valley School District to recuperate the losses incurred due to the Chromebook servicing vendor, Stay Mobile filing for Chapter Seven bankruptcy. Are there any questions associated with this?
Not a question. I just think it's B L U M. The motion has two U's.
Oh, okay, typo. Oh, and the attachment, it's B L U M, right.
Oh, it is two?
So then the attachment has a typo.
Yeah, just, I think, the name of the attachment. The, the, the document has two U's. It's just the name of the document, then. Strange name.
So I'll make the correction and move it to consent, yeah? 512 is approval of a feasibility study for administration building. The motion is to approve a GKO architect to conduct a feasibility study for the administration building at a cost to not exceed $7,500. Are there any questions associated with this? Not seeing any. I do have one question. So I I just want to make sure that the $7,500, does that include, will they provide options? And I apologize if we talked about this in Safety and Operations, and I don't remember. But does that, will that include options to vacate the building and relocate?
Yes, that will be part of what, what they will provide, yes.
If, if at all necessary, if it doesn't meet the criteria of what we're looking to achieve. Because there's a list of what we need to achieve. Okay, fine. Great. I'm okay to move that to consent if everybody else is. Okay, 513, it's approval of highway occupancy permit escrow with Perkyman Township. Motion is to, is for approval to set up a hop escrow with Perkyman Township at a cost not to exceed 1050 for the traffic improvements at Kegy and Campus Roads. Are there any questions? Move back to consent. 514, it's a motion to approve purchase a replacement dust collector. That's S.J. Thomas is the vendor for MS Middle School West at a cost not to exceed 105036. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 515, motion to approve the purchase of replacement custodial equipment through MJ Earl at a CoStar's cost of $23,546. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 516 is a motion to approve the purchase of replacing custodial equipment through Imperial Dade at a CoStar's cost of $6,548.48. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 517, approval of replacement zero-turn mower. Motion is to approve the purchase of a zero-turn mower from Little's at a CoStar's cost of $24,474. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 518 is the approval for the interactive panels. Motion is to approve the purchase of 175 ClearTouch interactive panels and 175 onboard Dell computers through CoStar's financed through a four-year lease agreement with Santander Bank. That was previously referenced, or it's referenced in the next item, at a cost not to exceed $629,335, and it's funded by the technology budget. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions or comments, we'll move that to consent. 519 is the approval for the financing for the interactive panels. Motion is to approve a four-year lease agreement with Santander Bank for the purchase of the 175 interactive panels and 175 Dell computers at an annual cost of $165,898, total financed amount $663,589. It's the principal and interest. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 520, approval of carpet installation. Motion is to approve Franklin Flooring to install carpet and LVT in the high school auditorium and lobby area at a cost of $80,346. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 521, approval of athletic training services. Motion is to approve St. Luke's University Health Network for athletic training services for the next three years beginning July 1st, 2022 at a cost of $140,000 in each of the three years. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 522 is approval of exception to policy 122 co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Motion is to approve an exception to policy 122 co-curricular and extracurricular activities for the 2223 school year to eliminate activity fees for students as recommended by administration. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 523 is the approval of the agreement to repair the fields at West and the high school. The motion is to approve Windview Athletic Fields to repair five athletic fields, four at Middle School West, seventh grade baseball field, softball field, eighth grade baseball field, softball field, and one at the high school, which is the softball field, at a cost not to exceed $67,250. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 524 and 525 are placeholders for next week. 526 is the approval of the budget, the general fund budget. So the motion is to approve the 2223 general fund budget in the amount of next week. Are there any questions? Move that to consent, then, yeah? No, we can't move it to consent. It has to wait until next week, and then we put the number in. Got it. Such a big meeting, Jim. This is so exciting. So exciting. I know, and I'm trying to beat you. I don't know. I don't, I didn't time myself. Okay. 527, are we ready to move on, then?
Yeah, this could be the same thing with this one, too.
Yep, 527 is the approval of the 2223 tax, the tax rates. So the motion will be to approve the tax rates for the 2223 fiscal year beginning July 1st. And that will include, that that'll be the millage per 100,000 of assessed valuation of taxable property. And then 528 is the approval of the 2022 Homestead-Farmstead exclusion resolution. The motion is to request to approve the 2022 Homestead-Farmstead exclusion resolution as presented by the district solicitor and business administrator. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, I will move that, ask, move that to consent, and that ends my section.
I will say for now on, you're always going to get business because you got Mr. Reaver to do a report in 10 minutes, so. Y'all are a tandem now. Payment of bills, Mrs. Mayers.
Thank you. The recommended action will be to authorize the payment, sorry, 6.01, to authorize the payment of bills as otherwise required during the interval between the June 2022 board meeting and the August 2022 board meeting, subject to approval by the district administration and the subsequent ratification by the board. Any questions? Can we move that to consent, please? 6.02 and 6.03.
Hold on one second, Mrs. Mayers.
That's not a consent because we don't have that information, right? You have to, we present it next week.
Okay.
No, this is to allow the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking it was the, yep, you're right. That's fine.
We're going to move this to consent.
Correct. Okay, thank you. And then 6.02 and 6.03, we will make the motion next week. And that ends my section.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mayers. Dr. Kohler.
Section seven, professional personnel. Item 7.01 is a motion to authorize the district administration to employ personnel and execute employment contracts for positions previously approved by the board, subject to limitations imposed by the 2022-2023 general fund budget. Any questions? Move that to consent. 7.02 is a placeholder. 7.03, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are all on consent. 7.09 is a placeholder, as well as 7.10, 7.11. The recommended action will be a motion to ratify resignation and release agreement as presented by the solicitor. Any questions? Then we will move that to consent, and that concludes section seven.
Thank you very much. Dr. Campley. Thank you very much. And Mr. Keenan.
We got section 9.01. We have a motion to hold a second reading of 218, 220, 227, 237, and 808. Anybody have any questions? We got student discipline, student expression, controlled substances, electronic devices, and food services. All right, if that's all right with everybody, we'll move that to consent. 9.02, we have a motion to approve the school board association's all-access membership package, including administrative regulations, at a cost of $17,072.19. And there are some documents attached which detail the dues. Any questions? If there are none, we will move that to consent. And 9.03, we have a motion to appoint Ms. Mrs. Evans-Brockett, Dr. Kohler, and Mr. Saylor as PVSD voting delegates to participate at the PSBA delegate assembly to be held Saturday, November 5th, 2022 in Mechanicsburg, or via Zoom if that happens. And attached is a draft of the letter if you want to care to take a look. Any comments or questions on that? If not, it'll move, we'll move it to consent, and that ends my section.
Thank you very much. Is there actually anyone in the audience? There's someone with a pink hat. Dr. Cybil, you're the only one in the audience. Do you have anything to say? No one's on Zoom. I just saw a hat sticking above a microphone. All right, comments from board members, Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly call out that it's Pride Month, and I want to reiterate my commitment to supporting inclusion in Perkyman Valley and say that I stand with our LGBTQIA+ students this month and every month.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kohler.
I just wanted to reiterate that I was able to attend the Art Food Truck Festival on Saturday. It was an amazing event, so thank you to everybody who had a hand in pulling that off. It was a beautiful day and really well-attended, and it just really makes you proud to be part of PV.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fallon.
I would concur with Dr. Kohler. It was a lot of fun. I got over there on Saturday as well, and it was, it was fun to see, hear, and experience.
Thank you very much, Ms. White.
I want to reiterate what Mrs. Evans-Brockett said and just send well wishes to all of our families and all of our students that identify or are ally as a LGBTQIA. I just wanted to say thank you to the community in general for being a supportive ally to our families and our, and our students that I do identify as LGBTQIA, and, and just say happy pride. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Keenan.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Dr. Campley.
I want to reiterate both, well, pretty much that whole slide over there. You know, it's Pride Month, and I do feel that PV is really working, and I hope continue to do the good efforts of equity inclusion for all of our students, including those of the LGBT community. And I also was able to go to the Food Truck Festival for the first time, and I thought it was a wonderful event. It was much more involved and had much more things for the community to do than I had actually anticipated, and I thought it was a great job. Well done.
Thank you, Dr. Campley. Mrs. Mayers.
Thank you. I wanted to respond to something that Mrs. Evans-Brockett said publicly. So I just wanted to respond to her talking about agenda and motions not being recognized. So, and, and Mrs. Evans-Brockett, you gave three examples. The first example, and I don't want to go into details, but I do want to apologize because what had gone back and forth in emails and then what you said at the end of that meeting. I apologize because I totally would have supported that, and I just assumed that it was things that we had been going back and forth with through email. So I apologize for that. That's something that I should have supported. So I apologize for that. Um, that's something that I should have supported. This, I don't know of a second, um, motion that you brought forward that you said that we didn't, um, have that option to discuss. So I'd love to have a conversation about that if you are interested, because I'm not knowing that one. And the third one, um, to my mind, it was really, it was just a difference of opinion because at no time was it said that you couldn't discuss education and your opinions about something that was already on the agenda. But that being said, I just wanted to move forward and say that I am thankful for the board, and I think that we do work together as a group of ten. It may not always, may have, be a little more tension-filled sometimes, maybe more questions. Um, but I don't see us voting against, I mean, aligned just in party lines, and as we shouldn't, because this is a school board. I'm grateful that Mrs. Evans-Brockett and Dr. Kohler and Dr. Russell and Mr. Saylor and myself worked together a couple of months ago to discuss and formulate board operating guidelines with the purpose of trying to get us to all, um, work together and move forward together. Um, so I just hope to continue to work together as a school board, and I'm grateful and thankful for each and every one of you and how we bring different viewpoints to the table, which can always, um, bring richer discussions and hopefully move us to continue to a really good place. Thank you.
Dr. Russell? Oh, thank you, Mrs. Mayers. Dr. Russell?
Thank you.
Ten point oh-three is the notice of video recording disclaimer. Uh, and ten point oh-four, I will rule adjournment. I do want to note that the executive session was held prior to the meeting for the purpose of safety, and, just for the purpose of safety, and there will be an executive session held post-meeting on matter of personnel and legal, and legal.